All right, everyone. Good evening. And welcome to our opioid, alcohol, tobacco, and other drug choice. You gotta get really close to this mic, to our panelists and speakers, okay? Town Hall meeting. Thank you all for being here tonight. This is a great, great turnout and shows that our community is, you know, very supportive and wants to learn about this very important issue. And that's why we're here tonight. My name is Jared Schmon. I'm the District Court Judge here in Cooching County. And we've got a panelist of great people here for us tonight to give you some insight on this issue. I want to give you just a little bit of background before we get started here, how we got here to bring this presentation to you here tonight. I can tell you that it's really started probably late last summer, early fall, when I started seeing some disturbing trends, especially in our juvenile court system, with two things. I was seeing juveniles coming into our juvenile delinquency system using more potent drugs, heavier drugs. And I was also at the same time seeing the age of those youth decreasing in their drug use. And that did not look like a real good combination, folks, to me. And so I convened a group of community leaders from all different areas to come together to discuss this. It included law enforcement, probation, our prosecutors, treatment professionals, social services, and other community leaders to come around the table, talk about this, and really for me to ask the question, this is what I'm seeing, is this what you're seeing? Is this really a problem or is this just, you know, a blip, an abnormality? And unfortunately, the consensus was pretty clear that this is a problem. It's increasing, it's getting worse. Younger juveniles are experimenting and doing some of these harder drugs. And that's scary. So we began meeting as a group about once a month, starting last fall. It became pretty evident early on in our meetings what we wanted. We wanted to get something put out to the community as quick as possible, some kind of forum like tonight. We didn't know exactly what that was going to look like. We wanted to do that because as a group that was sitting around that table, we felt that for a large part of our community, you may not know or understand the depth of this issue. And I can speak from personal experience very much to that. I started this role about two years ago, a little over two years ago. I've grown up, lived in this community my entire life. And yeah, you're aware of drug and alcohol abuse. You know what's out there. But I can tell you, I had no idea until I took this role as a District Court Judge about the quantity and the amount and the types of drugs that are in this community. And I don't want to scare you. And I don't want you to think that we're the only place. There's something wrong with us. That's not the case. This is across the board. I travel through other jurisdictions, other counties in my job. This affects all those communities too. But we wanted to bring this awareness to our community because we were seeing this scary trend. So we enlisted the help of CAPE, which is a Cooching Area Prevention and Education Group through our schools. We recruited Dave Baker from the Dan Baker Foundation to come and talk with us and give us his insight. And really, those two folks really put this together into this format that we have here tonight. Both CAPE and the Dan Baker Foundation are sponsoring this forum tonight. So I really want to thank both of them for this. The format for tonight is we're going to have some presentations here from our panelist members first. They'll come up and give a base, have a little bit to talk about. But we really want to get to the Q and A part, which is what the town forum, Town Hall forum is really all about. We want to allow all of you to be able to ask questions of our panelists. Hope to have, you know, as good answers we can give you. But let's be honest, this is not an easy issue. There's not a lot of easy answers. But we need to at least talk about it. And the purpose of tonight, as I said, is not to alarm or scare you, but to educate, provide insight, be transparent on what we are seeing in our community from all these different perspectives. And then give you some resources to talk about it. Our panel members were, just as you saw there, I'll introduce each of them as they come up, as we bring them up on stage for their portion of it. But also in your programs, and some of my programs actually ran out. We had such a great turnout. But if you did get a program, you'll see you've got an index card. At any time, you know, if you have a question or something in the presentation you want to ask more about, write down your question on that card. You can hold your hand up at any time. We've got a bunch of our CAPE students from the school that are here to help us tonight. If you raise your hand with that card, they'll see it. They'll come and pick that card up and they'll get it up here. And we'll get that in our Q and A at the end. So keep that in mind. And again, I want to thank you all for being here. I'm going to move right into our first panel member and speaker. And this is Dave Baker. Dave, I've known Dave for a long time. He's a community member from the Falls from way back. He's currently state representative and a businessman, community leader, husband and father. He owns a number of businesses in the Willmar, Candy Hill, High County area and has worked in management for nearly 30 years. At the Minnesota House where he is serving his 15th term, Dave serves on the Human Services Finance Committee, the Human Services Policy Committee, and the Workforce Development Committee, where he is the GOP lead. He was also elected as an Assistant Minority Leader from the House GOP members and serves as the House GOP Personal Chair. In honor of his late son, Dan, who passed away in 2011 from an accidental overdose, he has worked tirelessly to bring nation-leading opioid abuse prevention legislation to Minnesota, working across the aisle with the Senate to bring real changes to this epidemic. He serves as the Chair of the Opioid Epidemic Response Council in Minnesota. Dave, welcome back.
I did not write that bio. That was way too long. I apologize. Good evening, everybody. I am so honored to be here tonight. My amazing wife, Mary, sends her best. She's Phil and Ken's baby sister. Thanks for being here tonight too. We've got some family here tonight. Ellen and my sister Jenny is here today. And my niece Ellen is here. I don't know if you cut that. But it's so great to be back in the Falls. And I think I just wanted to say how this, when this started coming together, we were doing a lot of Zooms for me back in St. Paul. And knowing that I saw this community wanting to talk about this, and I had done a couple of these Town Halls elsewhere, and they were, I thought, pretty powerful. And I said, let's just do this part of this up here too. And they were very gracious to let me bring this video that we're going to show you right now. I'm going to keep this short. This is an important video that I thought was very authentic. It was produced, I thought, in a way that I've seen a lot of other videos. But I think this one shook me the most. And I hope it just opens your eyes. Like Jared said, we're not here to alarm you, but know it's right here in our back door. Just know substance use disorder and the disease of addiction and the dangers of fentanyl and other drugs are right, right here. So let's go ahead and play the video. And we'll kind of turn the lights on. Hopefully, the video will come out real well. But this is something I'm pretty proud of that I saw recently. So enjoy this, and then I'll talk for a little bit afterwards. So what we will do is while we figure this IT thing out, we'll figure this out, but I can talk a little bit about this. And if it happens to come on, I can stop. And if you guys get it figured out. I just, I think what I was going to say after the video, as it shows, and hopefully we'll be able to pop in right afterwards, is that this is a personal story for me. It's a personal story for hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people in Minnesota and hundreds of thousands around the country. When the opioid epidemic kind of kicked off in the mid-'90s, pharmaceutical companies duped, the FDA talked about things with doctors, and it became an epidemic that even the medical community did not see coming. And now what we have today is the medical community has done wonderful things about getting it under control. How they are prescribing today is much, much different than it was just a few years ago. As you've heard, we lost our son, Dan, who was born here in International Falls in 1986, just down the road. All three of our kids were born here. And when we left in 1994, we left here, just had everything in front of us. Dan had a great school year, Olivia, Alex. And we were blessed to have our world ahead of us. Dan got sick because of a back issue, prescribed opioids when he was 19 years old. And he went into treatment, and we lost him in 2011. And I wasn't in politics, never thought about all that stuff. I was working in the business with our family. We had a couple of restaurants, hospitality stuff. And what I realized was, when I was brought to my knees with this, and my wife has been amazingly strong through this process because she had experienced a lot more of this than I did before when she was little, losing her parents. She was able to kind of hold us together. And then we kind of had our time to fall apart afterwards later. But somehow later on, we got through that. And we started to, I was getting more involved with what really happened. You know, how did we get here? What in the world, what didn't I know as a dad? For crying out loud, we did everything we were supposed to do, we thought. We were trying to go to church. We're trying to live a good, clean life. We're trying to make sure our kids were healthy, had jobs, working hard. And I thought we were trying to check in those boxes off. And something happened here, and I didn't understand it. And again, as I mentioned earlier, things happened with greed and pharmaceutical companies, and other things happened that weren't supposed to happen the way they did. And now they're paying terrific lawsuits, which I wish they wouldn't because I wish we weren't here. But they're paying huge lawsuits now to settle these things, to make them go away. And that's what companies do, right? So I decided to run for office after Dan passed away, not because of this, but because of other things like business needs. Business is needed to be friendly in Minnesota, others, other things. But I was here, and I found out all these things as I was a legislator and all the things that we could actually do to make things better. And so I've been kind of on a mission now, the last eight years that I've been in office, to help talk about this around the state. I've done some national stuff. I'm an opioid fellow, what they call that. It's just somebody who kind of gets it a little deeper because I spend more time on this than most people should. But opioids, and now fentanyl, methamphetamines, you're going to see a lot of stuff tonight that's going on right around here, right around this area. And maybe we're getting there? Is this it? I'm not sure. But this is it. So you'll get even a shorter version when I'm done. So I think this is ready to play now. If we can get some volume.
Unresponsive at this time. ETA about two minutes. Anything further?
My name is Dominic Tierno. Since I graduated high school in 2014, I've had the great honor of directing a number of documentary films about drugs and drug addiction. Our mission is to revolutionize drug education by telling real-life stories that motivate young people to make one of the most important decisions of their life. And that's the decision to not use drugs. 2020 was the worst year for drug overdose deaths that we have ever seen. In the beginning of summer in 2020, I came across this article. A 14-year-old kid from a town I grew up in had died from what appeared to be a drug overdose. He's a smart, funny guy who, like many kids, was struggling with some anxiety issues and decided that he would turn to drugs to see if he could help himself with that. What happened was, he went and bought this pill, this OxyContin pill, from a guy he had known because he thought that pill might ease the pain of what he was going through mentally. Well, he didn't know it, but that OxyContin pill wasn't a real OxyContin pill. It was a fake pill. It looked just like the pill that he wanted to try. But instead of OxyContin, it was made with fentanyl, a synthetic opioid known to be 50 to 100 times the strength of morphine. That one pill he took that night killed him almost instantly. And his mom found him dead in his bedroom the next morning. Before I can even finish that article, I'm scrolling through and I see another linked article. Not far away, around the same time, another 14-year-old dead from fentanyl. So then I go back to Google and I type in "fentanyl deaths." I hit search, and then it all made sense. I saw another kid, and I saw high school students, college students, young adults, all recent, all over the country, all dead from fentanyl. And so I'm looking at that and I'm saying, these aren't just normal overdose deaths. These people think they're taking one drug, and turns out they're being killed. Why have we not heard about this?
It's a drug 50 times more potent than heroin. And doctors say just touching it can send you to the emergency room. We're talking about the synthetic opioid fentanyl.
The first time I heard about fentanyl was my sister busting in my house, being like, "Don't touch anything in his room, it's fentanyl." And I'm like, "I don't even know what you're talking about." Like, I have no idea what's going on right now. So most people haven't heard of this because we haven't been talking about it. Back in 2013, when it first started showing up, only about 3% of drug users were dying from it. Now we're looking at over 50% of drug deaths being attributed to fentanyl. If Alexander could have got a lesson, I wish he knew about fentanyl. I wish he understood that fentanyl poisoning is real and that every time you try something, you're playing with your life. It is pill roulette every time you try it. As a mom of a kid that was just trying to experiment, that's for a kid. As a mom of a kid that died just wanting to experiment, I wish I could just shake you and tell you and make it real for you. But I don't know how to do that. I won't be there when you're faced with these decisions. I know that if he knew the effects of his passing, it would crush him. He never intended for me to find him on his bedroom floor. He never intended for his dad to administer CPR, trying to save his life while we were waiting for the paramedics. Even his 12-year-old sister wanted to run in there and try to help do CPR, but I held her back. Alex didn't intend for me to see him wheeled away on a stretcher and put into an ambulance. Alex had no intentions of me seeing him lying on a stainless steel table covered with a sheet with only his head showing. Alex had no intentions of me knowing what it felt like to kiss his face for the last time. The images that I'm left with of that day replay in my mind on a regular basis. Please do not put your family through this. And please, 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 I beg of you, learn about fentanyl now. Don't wait until your best friend has died or a brother or your sister. Learn about it now so you could help your friends. You can tell them, you can warn them. You can be a very important part of saving lives.
This would be how much cocaine somebody would have to ingest to kill them. This is the approximate number of prescription pills one would have to ingest to kill them. This is the amount of heroin the average person would have to ingest to kill them. Fentanyl. You're going to have to bring that camera up here real close to see it. This much fentanyl would kill you and I if we split it. They put fentanyl in cocaine. They put fentanyl in heroin. They put fentanyl, as we already know and talked about, into counterfeit pills. It's odorless, it's tasteless, you don't know it's there. And when you find out it's there, it's too late. You won't even know it. You'll be dead. 2,500 people would be killed by that amount of fentanyl. Does that sound like a drug to you? Does that sound more like a poison? I was a police officer for 31 years. And during my time in narcotics, I'd never heard of fentanyl. In homicide, I saw many, many tragic things. I saw people that were killed by shootings, stabbings, beatings. Nothing that I saw at that particular time would have ever prepared me to see Jessica. I was at work. I got a telephone call from my wife, Cherie. She was frantic, uncontrollable, screaming into the phone about Jessica. And I knew something had happened. Jessica lived with her boyfriend, Nicholas. And a stupid decision in which they ordered and had some cocaine delivered to them, to their house, resulted in them ingesting it. And my daughter, at that particular time, became forever 29 years of age. Jessica didn't want to die. She has a beautiful daughter, Alara, who is now with Cherie and I, and we are raising. And she had everything to live for. Jessica knew about fentanyl, you know, from talking about this issue after she died with her friends. I discovered that Jessica had a friend that had even died a couple of weeks prior to her death. And Jessica had spoken to her friends about being afraid. Well, if you knew about it, why would you even risk it, sweetheart? You knew it. Why did you make that bad decision? Who knows? Those are things that you'll never answer. We're just trying to prevent it from happening to somebody else.
Dealers are using social media to show off what they've got, infiltrating feeds of ever-younger teens curious about this flashy lifestyle. With more addicts and overdoses by the day, they've got drivers on demand delivering any drug to your door 24/7.
Social media app has changed the game when it comes to narcotics. Fentanyl's all over the place, and just massive amounts of it. And some of them are going to fall trapped today.
Four years ago, DEA in Arizona seized zero fentanyl. This last year, we seize no fentanyl to kill 70 million people. You're playing Russian roulette out there when you're taking these pills and you're buying the stuff off the street.
Social media's completely changed the landscape of the drug trade. Most people start by searching for what they think are prescription medications. And drug dealers respond, saying that's what they have. But what you have to be careful about is what you're asking for and what you get can be two different things. And if you're buying the stuff from somebody online, their bottom line is, they're just looking to make a quick buck. They don't have your best interest in mind. They'll tell you whatever you want to hear. Unless you're getting these drugs from your doctor or a licensed pharmacy in a bottle that has your name on it, you may as well assume these drugs are fake. You're not getting the real thing. Fentanyl's literally taken over the drug market. It's in everything. It's in meth, it's in cocaine. Obviously, the counterfeit pills that are out there, we're starting to see it showing up now in marijuana. The people who make this stuff, who are putting the fentanyl in everything, they have one goal: to get you hooked. Fentanyl is highly, highly addicted. They're going to trick you into thinking you're getting something you're not, to take you down that rabbit hole, to get you hooked on fentanyl and have you become an addict. Because to them, you're a customer. And you'll be a returning customer at that point. One of those times, you're going to get enough fentanyl to kill you. Alex was in her bedroom at night, getting ready for bed. She went on social media in search of OxyContin. It wasn't hard for her to find a drug dealer. And she had what she thought was OxyContin delivered to our house. One pill had enough fentanyl to kill five people. My daughter took half of this pill and died instantly. In an instant, my life was changed forever. My last memory of my daughter is of her being wheeled out on a gurney. Saw my daughter brought into this world, and I saw her leave this world. I have four daughters, a beautiful wife. Every time we take a family picture, I don't see who's there, I see who's missing. It's an odd feeling to looking forward to dying because you know that's when your heart will be made whole again. Alex would have never wanted this. Don't do it to your parents.
The end of the world at the palm of my hand.
It was March 31st. That evening was one of the most special evenings we had had in a long time. I told them to come downstairs, that I wanted to hug them. I don't know why. And he came down the stairs and he hugged me. He said, "Dad, I'm so sorry for all the things that I had put you through in the past." And I said, "Don't worry about it, Daniel. You're just a kid and you're just learning. But you're going places. You've got a great future coming ahead of you. I'm just so proud of you. You have no idea." "All right, Dad, good night. Love you." "Good night, son, I love you too. See you tomorrow morning." Next day, about 8 o'clock in the morning, when I walked into his room, he was in a lying position facing up, up against a headboard with his hands over his chest. And I saw his eyes. He had a little blue on top of his lips. I screamed at the very top of my lungs, "Daniel! I called the paramedics. They carried him down the stairs and put him on the first floor and started doing chest compressions. And then they took him to Los Angeles Children's Hospital, where we were put in a waiting room. And later on that evening, a team of doctors came in. And they said, "Your boy is just a shell of a boy that he was before. He's not coming back." My only child. I couldn't protect him. I couldn't save his life. I couldn't save my son, Daniel. My son is gone. It wasn't supposed to be this way. He was supposed to graduate from high school this year. If you love yourself, you respect yourself, you love life, you have a choice. Because it is between life or death. This is no joke. You can and will die. How do I know this? I can tell you that I've met thousands upon thousands upon thousands of parents nationwide. I wish somebody had sat me down and had this talk with me about what fentanyl does to people. I didn't get that chance. You do.
You know, there's always been one main problem with the films that we make. And it's the reason why we try to keep them as real and as relatable as possible. People just so commonly think that it will not happen to them. I'm talking about great people, nice people, cool people, intelligent people with big plans for the future, big potential. Gone because of one choice they didn't know would end their life. Fentanyl is coming for anyone and everyone. So the most important message that I can give to kids, to teens, young adults, anybody, is the same old message we've heard time and time again. And that's to really get serious about not even trying a drug. You see, back when we first started, I was telling kids not to use drugs because you might get hooked, you might get addicted. Now, it's not, there's not even time for that. Now it's, don't try drugs because you might actually not wake up tomorrow, you might actually not get another chance. One choice is all it takes. If you don't believe that, I guarantee you, at this point, there was someone very similar to you who wished they could be here right now to look into the camera and look into your eyes and say, "Don't do it. Please, don't do it. Please, I wish I wouldn't have done it. Don't do it. Don't risk your life." So my question for you is, are you going to listen? Or will it be your family and your friends holding your picture wishing they could have been there to tell you?
This is my son, Alexander. He died at fourteen years old from fentanyl poisoning.
This is our daughter, Jessica. She was twenty-nine years old when she was killed by fentanyl.
This is my daughter, Alex. She was murdered at twenty years old by a drug dealer who sold her a counterfeit pill made of fentanyl.
This is my son, Daniel Joseph Puerta Johnson, killed at the age of sixteen by illicit fentanyl.
This is my son.
Uh, we can't make that up because of all the people that have been killed around the country. But we wanted to make sure you knew, um, this does get close to home, this does hit a lot of us here. And it's important that we share this information, again, like, like Judge said earlier, this isn't to scare you or alarm you, but this is what's going on out there. So the better you know, the more you know, the better you'll talk to your loved ones about this. And I, and I know when we get going with the panel here, we're gonna talk about things like stigma and how people don't want to talk about addiction and substance use disorder. We want to make sure you know there's a lot of help out there. We'll talk about that today. You've got some really good people locally that are, are doing some things to help your community stay safe. But this stuff is coming at us faster than we ever imagined. And, um, again, I think we're gonna show a photo of, of Dan real quick, if you've got that ready to go. Because, again, Dan is a real person who was here. There's been other people that we have lost. And, um, we just want to make sure you guys know this, this is where this is at. You know, legislatively, we're doing some things to give prosecutors more tooth, more teeth and more, more stuff to do this. But here, you know, this is, this is where it gets local. You know, this is my son, Dan, who passed away in 2011. And this is Andrew Catron, who died just four and a half years ago. And I came up and I saw his parents for the funeral and it was crushing to see old friends of mine have to go through what I went through five and a half years ago before that. And we are, we are sharing this and showing this because this is here, it's around us. And, uh, these are two amazing young men, beautiful people that aren't gonna have a chance now to, to let us see them get older, have children, get married, all the things that you think about with your children. So I want you to make sure that you know that these are just two and there's more. And there's more out there, but, uh, again, I just want to say thank you. I'm gonna be visiting more here at the panel. There's a lot more to share about this stuff and I'm looking forward to talking about other things we're actually doing on this issue. So, um, we've got other great speakers, so thank you again for coming. Love you, Dan, love you, Andrew. And the stories I have heard about Andrew Catron are amazing. I didn't, I had never met him, but he was an amazing young man. So with that, I will turn it back over to the judge and we'll take it from there. Thanks. All right, thank you, uh, thank you, Dave, and, uh, again, thank you for all your tireless work on this issue and all the work you do, uh, down at the state legislature. It's, uh, it's just, uh, it's great and, uh, um, and it's well needed. So we're gonna move on, uh, here. Our next, uh, our next panelist members that we're gonna bring up are from law enforcement and, uh, we'll move on to, uh, their presentation, really just gonna go over some of the stats, um, of what, what they're seeing, what we're seeing, uh, locally here. And, uh, the first, uh, first one I'd like to introduce is Chief Deputy John Fromke. He started his law enforcement career in 2001 as a city officer for the Dilworth Police Department. In 2007, he transitioned to the State Patrol and worked in the International Falls area as a state trooper until he was appointed to the chief deputy, uh, position with the Cooching County Sheriff's Office in 2014. Along with, uh, Chief Deputy Fromke, we have Officer Mastin that will join him. Officer Mastin started working with Sheriff's Office back in 2011, came full-time with the Police Department in 2013. Officer Mastin has spent approximately eight of the last ten years working narcotics investigations primarily and has been on the Paul Bunyan Task Force, uh, for the past five years. So Chief Deputy Fromke and Officer Mastin, welcome. Up here, we have our next slide. All right, so how about the, uh, number seven there? Number seven? Right there. All right, so this is something we wanted to, uh, to show folks. And I know you've seen this, uh, both, uh, both of you, we've talked about it. But this was, uh, this was ran in, uh, as a public service announcement down in, uh, well, went across the state, but primarily down in Blumidgee area. And, uh, you know, it, it was, we felt something that was very important to show all of you, especially after that video that we just watched. And this, this was put out because of, as I can see, they're really looking and looking for answers and looking for help. But as you can see from, uh, this announcement, uh, since this came out on January 25th of this year and since December 1st, 2022, in Blumidgee alone, uh, there were thirty-five overdoses and nine fatalities. Folks, that's two hours south of us. So I guess the question certainly, um, you know, I think that probably jumps out to everyone and certainly, uh, certainly me as well is, uh, you know, are we seeing that, we seeing some of this stuff, some of those same types of trends, uh, here locally?
You know, the answer to that is yes. Certainly we're not at thirty-five, um, but again, like the judge said, this is a couple hours south of us. We're then next slide with our stats. Let's talk about some stats and the numbers don't lie. The fourth quarter, uh, numbers weren't in quite yet, so we used the first three quarters of 2020 and 2022. You take a look, I mean, the fentanyl is huge, not only the pills, but just the grams of fentanyl. It's just staggering. Uh, trends were seen also as younger kids, thirteen-year-olds, fourteen-year-olds on meth now. It's not uncommon in our community. You know, and again, the, the amounts speak for themselves. I remember back about ten years ago, I had a buddy of mine, he was a, well, he was a narcotics officer for Minneapolis Police Department. And I had told him about one of the recent busts that Josh had probably done. And, uh, I don't know, it was grams, right? And he's like, "We don't even worry about the grams, we go for the pounds." And we recently had a pound here. And I remember hearing that the other day and I was like, "Wow." A pound of methamphetamine. And I was like, "Wow, we, we now have what Minneapolis has arriving at our doorsteps." Again, our presentation's short, sweet, this is what we're dealing with on the streets. You know, Josh deals with this almost every day. And, uh, it's only getting worse.
Yeah, just to, uh, kind of put it in a perspective too with the numbers, um, the fentanyl in grams there, two-hundred-and-fifty-nine in 2020, and this is the task force stats, Paul Bunyan Task Force stats. So there are a number of, um, counties involved in that. But like the judge said, this is just a hundred miles away from us. And, um, on the other side too, in Virginia, um, Duluth, the Lake Superior Task Force is dealing with the same kind of numbers. So it's a hundred miles away from us, um, in each direction and we have had it here too. We have seized drugs locally, um, with fentanyl in them. There's been methamphetamine with fentanyl laced into it. And not locally, but marijuana has had fentanyl in it. And you, as you guys saw in the video, that, that snapshot of the, the one piece of fentanyl, so the nineteen-hundred grams of fentanyl, a dose of that would be less than a quarter gram. So you can take that number and times it by four or five, um, that's how many doses. The methamphetamine more than doubled, um, and fentanyl's coming in that too. So like they said in the video, you, you just don't know what you're getting. A lot of, a lot of it is pills. People are pressing their own pills, lacing fentanyl in there. So like they said, it is, it's, it's a gamble every single time. So we just want to put it out there and, and make everybody aware of, of what's going on and, and that it is here. And we can't stress enough how many times we've said we're not here to, to alarm anybody or, or scare anybody, but to get the word out. So the question and, question and answer at the end will be very important too, so.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. So our next, uh, our next presenter is our Juvenile Probation Officer, Kate Olin. She's with Arrowhead Regional Corrections, is the juvenile probation officer here in Cooching County. She was previously employed at the Center for Alcohol Treatment in Duluth and volunteered with the St. Louis County Treatment Court in Duluth as well. So Kate, come on up.
I have been working, is it on? Oh, it is, okay. I have been working in the community for four years and although that is a short amount of time, I've really grown respect and care for this community. Since becoming the juvenile agent, I have observed the typical expectations of smoking, slash vaping, um, liquor and marijuana use among juveniles. However, I never expected to find fourteen and fifteen-year-olds using methamphetamine. This past summer, I did not just have one juvenile admit to methamphetamine use, I had four. Just like everyone else on the panel today, I want to educate our community and, um, so we know what to look for, how to get help in acknowledging this issue so we can achieve a healthier community. So the following slide is going to be pictures of what I have seized along with law enforcement over the past six months or so. I've included the ages in the photos of what these are, um, just to show you guys that it, it's real, it's here and the kids are doing it and it's scary. So right here was taken from a seventeen-year-old in our community. I have labeled them by numbers to better identify them. Number one is a marijuana bong, same here. Number two are rolling papers that can either be tobacco or marijuana. Uh, number three is a torch or just a very big lighter. Right here, these little cans, uh, I usually see those used for holding THC wax, which is a felony. Number five is the actual marijuana bud there. And then number six is a rolling tray. This was from a nineteen-year-old in our community. This paraphernalia is consistent with meth use. Number one is this glass pipe, that is a meth pipe. Right there, you can see, sorry, I'm shaking so bad. Right there, you can see the pen tip that is used for snorting. Here's rubber hosing for a bong, number three. And four are cut straws. They use straws to snort, notice the angles that they're cut at. However, they burn the edges so they can use it to scoop afterwards. Five is also from a meth bong, it's just rubber hosing. This was from a fifteen-year-old in our community. If you can see this small baggie, it has a crystal-like substance in it, white, uh, that is methamphetamine. This test right here that the officer is holding is called a NIC test or a field test and it's showing that it is positive for methamphetamine. and it's showing that it is positive for methamphetamine. Again, this was from a 15-year-old. Also from this 15-year-old, we have a meth pipe here. I wanted to point that out specifically because there's a big difference between meth pipes and marijuana pipes. Meth pipes have smaller openings as marijuana pipes have bigger bowls. There's the loon vape, that's pretty common right now. And then this is called fluff. It's a cutting agent, it's not actually drugs most of the time, but it is used to make drugs look more, like more of a deal that you're getting when you pay for it. This is a meth bong. These were found on adults in the community. What I want to point out is the meth pipe here. Also, meth can be used intravenously. So we have the needles, oh, there it is, the needles here. Also, which has not been mentioned yet, I believe, is Narcan and naloxone, they are the same thing. Naloxone can be injected in the muscle, so typically your thigh or bicep area. Narcan is used to be sprayed in your nose. It is a life-saving drug for anyone who's experiencing opiate overdose. Sometimes it takes more than one Narcan. I have known many people working in Duluth that have had to have been Narcan four times. If someone is not responding from Narcan, you would use more Narcan every two to three minutes, alternating nostrils. This was truly recent. Here's a lorazepam, known as Ativan. That is a bendodiazepine, that is a drug, scheduled substance. And then right here, this little blue pill here, which is right next to the prescribed, can be prescribed medication, is suspected fentanyl. This is from a 14-year-old. He tested positive not only for THC, but he tested positive for norfentanyl. Norfentanyl is the same thing as fentanyl, it is just the strain, a different type of strain. He was positive for this, 14-years-old. So there's a couple options if you suspect your kid is using. We have the UA cups, or urine analysis cups here, which you can buy on Amazon. They're about $25 for five, I believe I saw. And then what I've seen in our community is that the at-home marijuana drug test, I believe they're sold at the drugstore. They are to, these, specifically the at-home marijuana drug test, is use strips to put into urine to find the presence of methamphetamine. And these, you can see the different type of panels here. This first one is amphetamine, and honestly, I can't see the rest of them. But there's many different panels, there's 12 to 14, 16 panels. And that just says what kind of drugs they test for, different type of drugs they test for. What else is popular is cleaners. Cleaners are something that someone will take to have a negative urine test. So we are not able to see if they have used drugs. Stinger detox is the most common around here. This is a 24-hour flush. You take it 24 hours before a test and you're good, you're good to go. So what else should you be looking for in our community especially? What I see is out past curfew, smoking, drinking, and then minimalizing that issue. Weight loss, change in eating behaviors, unsettled anger, paranoia, truancy, stealing and asking for money. What I want to point out is spending time with peers outside their age group. That is what I've seen is the most common around here. So what happens next? You found out your kid may be using, you're really worried, you want to, you know, take the next step to help them. So the next step is to get a comprehensive assessment, formerly known as a Rule 25. That is to, it is done by a chemical counselor who is able to diagnose your kid with a substance use disorder if it is present. And then usually their recommendations are inpatient or outpatient. Inpatient is when your child or anyone goes into a rehab facility in another place and it is a secure building, secure location, and they receive treatment daily. Outpatient treatment, which is offered here by Rainy River Recovery and Pineview Recovery, allows the person to stay in the community, but need to commit themselves to three or four groups a week to meet with their chemical counselor and be in drug groups. I will tell the next one later, okay. So I focus mostly on juveniles because that is who I work with. So we only have five inpatient places in Minnesota that will accept juvenile inpatient. Four of the five will also treat young girls. Most facilities care for juveniles about 12 to 18 years old. The average stay of an inpatient facility is 28 days. However, it can be extended longer, 60 to 90 days longer. Average cost of an inpatient facility is $6,000 to $60,000. I see the average is about $20,000. I have heard from social services, there's consolidated funding and insurance that would be helpful to help you achieve treatment. Types of services they receive, group therapy, you know, continuing their school education, individual therapy, how to communicate safely, team building, and then therapeutic recreation and treatment coordination. So I pointed out in here where the facilities are and how far away they are from International Falls. We have the Wings Adolescent Treatment Center, it is boys only. It's in Litchfield, which is five hours and four minutes away from International Falls. Red Lake Northern Woods Adolescent Treatment Center, Bemidji, which is one hour and 44 minutes away. Minnesota Teen Challenge Boys Lakeside Academy, which is also boys only, is located in Buffalo. It is five hours and one minute away. Hazleton for juveniles is located in Plymouth, Minnesota, four hours and 51 minutes. And then there's also Phoenix Recovery, also it's boys only. It's located in Mankato in Maplewood. So respectively, it's five hours and 57 minutes or four hours and 38 minutes. So returning to the community after you've been an inpatient, there are options for you. We do have outpatient here, as I mentioned earlier. And also some treatment facilities recommend their own type of aftercare. Like for instance, Hazleton, after someone is released from them, they have online outpatient that they meet four times a week. Then we have our outpatient here, Rainy River Recovery and Pineview. And they can help you set up, and that's again, you know, you stay in the community, but you meet every so often to heal. We have NA and AA groups at the Alano Club. I've included their information on the tables in the back. It is just a safe place for people in recovery to talk. Counseling, we have two counseling places here. We have Northland Counseling and we have Cedar Branch Counseling. Due to the need for mental health, there is issues with scheduling, I was told, and allowing new people to come in. So I was told that parents or anyone could go to thehealthpartners.com and work with their insurance company to find somebody. Most counseling sessions are still doing it by Zoom. Also, family and peer support. You've taken the first step today to educate yourself about this disease and what to look for in your child and everything else. But you need to be able to support your child without enabling the behavior. So I'm from the Duluth area and I've had a lot of friends pass away from overdoses. We got John, he was born in 1989. He passed away at 27 years old in 2016 from an opioid overdose. Taylor, who was my great friend, born in 1990, passed away at 31 years old, just not a year and a half ago from fentanyl poisoning. Michaela, also a really good friend, born 1996, passed away at 21 in 2018 from fentanyl poisoning. Steve, born 1986, he was 36-year-old. He just died last year from an opioid overdose. John, born 1984, passed away two years ago at the age of 34 from an opioid overdose. I just, I wanted to dedicate my presentation to them because none of them wanted to die. None of them, they predicted a future and they were stolen from them. They are forever, their ages.
Thank you, Kate. All right, our next presenters are Gus and Heather from Rainy River Recovery. So Heather Clemmenson, Gus Christensen. Gus is a licensed alcohol and drug counselor and co-owner of Rainy River Recovery International Falls. Heather Clemmenson has a Master of Science in Psychology and Addiction Studies. She is a licensed alcohol and drug counselor, as well as a licensed professional clinical counselor in mental health. She's been serving Koochin County for the past six years and specializes in treating addiction, as well as other mental health disorders such as anxiety, depression, and post-traumatic stress disorder, servicing both adults and our juvenile and adolescent population. Heather's a local resident of Little Fork with her husband Ian, two children, Harlan and Lime, and Saint Bernard, Aggie. All right, welcome, welcome up here, folks. And Heather's going to talk a little bit about just some of these different drugs that we're seeing. So Heather, here you go.
First, I guess I just want to thank everyone for coming. I know it's difficult to give up a Wednesday night, but we appreciate it. So the first question people might have is what are opiates or opioids? Fentanyl is one of them. One of, another name you might notice as heroin, that's one of the more common opiates. They can also be prescription medications, hydrocodone, morphine. And what they do is they act on naturally occurring chemicals in your brain. It's no surprise to anyone here that this has been one of the most difficult times for kids. We just had a COVID pandemic, we have a really intense political arena right now. And the thing that I wanted to say that opiates do is they not just, they not only treat physical pain, but they treat emotional pain, which makes this drug more reinforcing. So opiates act on different receptors in your brain. I have a Master in Science and I'm super nerdy and I'll try not to give you all those details. But they act on GABA, which is a feel-good, makes you really calm down. That's why like someone uses heroin, they might fall asleep. Fentanyl will do the same thing. Which brings me to what fentanyl is. Fentanyl is one of the most potent opioids. Like our video at the beginning said, it's 50 to 100 times more potent. It can kill, a small amount can kill one person, especially a child. I wanted to include other drugs, including stimulants and marijuana. The first one will be stimulants because a lot of our kids aren't going out looking for fentanyl. They're not asking their friends for fentanyl, they're asking their friends for meth, or they're asking their friends for weed. Meth, though, looks very similar to fentanyl in some forms. Meth is the, both of those are meth. The easier to identify one would be the crystals, but it can also come in that powder, which looks very similar to fentanyl when it's not dyed or pressed into pills. It acts on the feel-good receptors in your brain, making it really addictive. It releases dopamine. And if your kids aren't feeling great about things, whether that be depression, anxiety, methamphetamine will release that dopamine and they'll start feeling better, which acts on the reward system and they're more likely to do it again. Marijuana is going to be the trickier one. Many of us, you know, in high school, if we used marijuana, it was like this bud-looking stuff. It comes in new forms now. There's these vapes up here. Anyone over 21 can buy marijuana or THC. It can be a gummy. They might be, they look like gummy bears sometimes, other gummy snacks. There's usually more sugar on them. You can't really tell, I mean, unless you taste it. But the other ones that you're looking for is these vapes. So you saw pictures of loons, which are disposable e-cigarettes. Well, they also make e-cigarettes that are refillable. So you can have cartridges and then there's oils that you fill them in. The oils that you fill them with could contain THC and you wouldn't know. And then I wanted to bring up what laced is. In the video, it talked about maybe a kid is going to look for a hydrocodone or some other sort of pill and they actually got fentanyl. What kids on the street call it is laced. It's the combination of two or more substances. Marijuana can be laced with methamphetamines, methamphetamines can be laced with fentanyl, it can go both ways. The danger of laced substances is many users will not recognize a substance as laced until the intoxicating effects are not as expected or abnormal. And that's difficult for kids because maybe your kid is going out and experimenting and they want to use some weed. You know, they don't really know what it looks like, maybe there's a white substance on it, they aren't going to recognize it. Marijuana typically is a relaxant, you're going to chill. Indica is one of the strains, they call it in the couch, kind of dumb, but. So then they'll get tired, which is really the same effect as fentanyl. Okay, so we've smoked some weed and we're getting tired, that's pretty normal, until they go to sleep and they don't wake up. And that's what they're not going to know, that's what we don't know. You can't taste fentanyl, you can't smell fentanyl. I mean, someone who's experienced with substances might be able to see a white powder on weed. Maybe not, maybe it's in the oil, you can't see it, you can't smell it. And methamphetamine, it can look the exact same. You won't know if there's fentanyl in methamphetamines. You might just use it. And then kids, I talked to one of my adolescents today. I was telling him about the presentation today and I said, you know, have you ever used fentanyl? He says, yeah. I said, well, well, why? Well, when kids are using, what they've said is you're in that headspace and you know what you're risking, but you're not in that right mindset. He said, I really, it was worth it. Because when you're using meth consistently, you're getting this high, it's feeling great, you have this euphoria, and then you start coming down. The dangerous thing is when you're coming down, it can feel like when you used fentanyl. So now our kids can't identify if they're coming off a methamphetamine bender or if they're slowly dying. You can go ahead and switch it. And so I figured after I scared you all enough, I should tell you maybe what you can do to try save our kids. So Kate talked a little bit about Narcan or naloxone. Narcan is that nose mist you see. If you see your kid maybe somehow used fentanyl, you would administer this Narcan. Like goes up their nose, you spray it, supposed to return breathing to normal within two to three minutes. Naloxone is a syringe that's intramuscular, less easy to use, more effective than the nasal spray. And then we have fentanyl test strips. This, I was debating putting this in here or not because we don't encourage general public to handle fentanyl. Even skin contact can cause an overdose. But we do have fentanyl test strips, so what I put at the bottom is the most important thing, your safest option is to contact law enforcement. They're trained on how to handle these things. Am I doing this slide? Okay. Not getting too geeky again. So addiction works in the brain. And a lot of you might be wondering, how can a kid be addicted? Can my kid be addicted? And there isn't a real clear answer. What we do know is the brain doesn't fully develop until they're 25. And all of these drugs act on natural chemicals in the brain. And as you add an artificial chemical, And as you add an artificial chemical, let's say you're using meth and you start artificially adding dopamine, your brain stops producing dopamine trying to find that balance again. It's constantly looking for that homeostasis. So if your child is out there using meth, using marijuana, it's altering their brain chemicals. And the issue then is if we do want them to stop using it, there's that crash. That's how addiction works. And then all of a sudden, their brain is craving what it knew. Have you ever listened to, like you can remember maybe some of your favorite songs? You can remember the lyrics like word for word. When a child uses a substance or when an adult uses a substance, that connection is there and it'll stay there. It's, they're 50 to 100 times more strong, stronger than the chemicals that are already in our brain, that naturally occur in our brain. One more thing. The good thing about that, now that everybody's worried about fentanyl, is if your child is using, and let's say they've already messed up their brain chemical balance, they have a better chance at finding that homeostasis when they do stop using. It might be more difficult to get them to stop because kids are into that immediate gratification. You know, they want that feel-good. But kids' brains also are still in that growing period and we have a better chance at getting them to reconnect to healthier skills and healthier ways to release dopamine. And here's Gus.
I don't know if everybody knows the other, but that young lady is a rock star. Where'd she go? Is it, no. She is really awesome. She's our clinic. What's that? Heather's our clinical director over at Rainy River Recovery. And as you can tell, she's a sharp, sharp young lady. Hello, good girl. My name's Gus. I'm an alcoholic, an addict. I lived in Koochin County for almost 70 years. I've watched these streets, my county, from alcohol and drug perspective, from a mental health perspective, for a lot of years. I'm in long-term recovery, proud of that, and I love what I do. I got the greatest job in the world, but at the same time, it's mind-numbing. It'll crush the things that we do see. I don't have any slides. Those of you that know me know I probably had about 600 of them. Thank God they took them away. Feel like that. But I want to let you know or tell you a little bit about what we do over there. We do chemical assessments, now reach. We do outpatient treatment, intensive outpatient treatment. We do individual therapy, now health therapy. That's Heather's bag. And interestingly enough, and over the last month and a half, I've looked back over charts and through client files and things like that. And what's interesting is that in Koochin County, the hundreds, hundreds of people that we've seen, the assessments that we've done, the opiate issue up here has kind of fallen by the wayside. It's here, but it's not, it's not really what we deal with today. The norm is alcohol, methamphetamines, cannabis. Probably over 90%, 95%. Having lived here as long as I have and having watched things that I have, I do know this, and we know this as counselors and as assessors, that our community, our county, right now is crawling with methamphetamine. I've never seen anything like it. All these years, I've never seen anything like this. Clients verify that. I said to clients the other day, I said, how long would it take you to put together? This was a dozen people. Just out of curiosity, how long, if I fronted you the money, how long would it take you guys to leave here, come back with a pound of methamphetamine? And they laughed. They laughed. They laughed, not because it was funny, but because they thought it was a joke. Because they know how easy it is to get. And they got talking among themselves and I watched this happen. And it's very easy to find. It's very easy to get. These are adults. These aren't adolescents. These are adults. Adults know where it is. Adults are moving it around. The adolescents have ready access to it. Methamphetamine is tough to treat. Treat them. It's tough to treat. Cannabis, probably the hardest thing there is to treat. It's borderline impossible to convince somebody that cannabis is bad for them. But I've seen it more from Iowa ditch weed in the late 60s, early 70s to the sticky bud with 45, 50% THC content and the dabs and what have you that they have access to today. It's a drug that scares me, scares us because of what the potential is as far as the damage to adolescent brain that's going on. And the fact that we tend to blow it out. It's been marijuana, that's all it is. So why bring those through up and why focus on those? It's an opioid thing and fentanyl is an opiate. Because if, we've got some slides up here, 35 overdoses and got eight deaths in the mid area. The bulk of those are what Heather was talking about. They're laced methamphetamine and cannabis deaths. We've got to get a handle on that. Fentanyl is killing, is going to kill kids. It's going to keep killing kids. It's a very, very dangerous thing. And I do know that fentanyl finds its way into, and I'm sure that law enforcement officers probation verify this too. It finds its way into the meth and into the cannabis that's up here, right? We need to figure out how to get a handle on that, if that's possible. We need to mitigate that to whatever degree we can. We also have to learn how to be parents. How to certainly recognize behaviors in our kids, using behaviors. But I think more importantly, we need to know what to do when my son or my daughter appears to be in trouble. We need to know how to handle that. And I believe that we also need to start remembering that the problems that we have right now and this fentanyl wave, it almost appears like it's a wave that's moving north and we're going to get COVID. Nothing compared to what this is. So there's also the long-term solutions. And I think parents today have got to focus on their young children and raising their young children to trust that they can come to you if they're scared. If they don't know which way to turn, what to do about the bullying, what to do about their perceived inadequacies, their fears, they need to know. Starting now with these kids, they're grown up and they're coming into this, heading into this. They've got to know that they can come to you and you're not going to bitch, complain, throw shit around, discipline them in unfair ways. Start with the kids. We need to deal with the adolescents today. We need to do that, but we also need to admit. We've got to be honest. We're not, I don't think we're any worse than Rapids or Vamiji or Edelgard or anything like that. But we got to admit that we got a bad drug problem here in town. And those people, nickname I've heard given to people to use, those people, remember, they're mean, all right? I'm a taxpayer. I'm a business owner. I'm a father. I'm a husband, grandfather. I'm a neighbor and I'm a good friend. I'm an alcoholic. I'm an addict. We need to recognize that. And we need to start looking at the people that are in our lives and our community a little bit different than I think we do today. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus and Heather. Our next presenters are from Cape. We've got Beth Slotinsky and Janessa Blaski. Beth and Janessa work as prevention specialists out of the Falls High School under the Drug Free Communities Grant. And also joining them here to be up on the panel tonight is Josh Balaio. He started his law enforcement career in 2019 with the Chisago County Sheriff's Office. Moved to the Falls in 2020 and started working for the Koochin County Sheriff's Department, currently with the International Falls Police Department and has been doing a lot of work with folks at Cape in the high school. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, guys, for coming out tonight. It's a wonderful turnout. I am Beth Slotinsky. This is Janessa. I have worked in prevention work now for seven years. And our first grant that we had was a state-funded grant. Now we're in our second stage of our prevention grant and now we have a federally funded grant that we work at the school. So what is our why? I think everybody up here on the stage will agree that our why is because we care about our community. I know I can speak for Janessa myself that we care for the youth in our community. We care for the young adults in our community and we care for our community as a whole. So that's why we do the work that we do. Cape stands for Koochin Area Prevention and Education. One of the unique things that, we had Representative Baker come to the school today and one of the things that he was even, what he was able to see is that we have a room at our high school called the Cape Room that kids come and spend the day. They can check out of the study hall. If they're done with their homework, they can come down. It's a safe place. They can come and we have meetings weekly. We have our Cape students here. I'm going to disagree with Gus. Janessa and I have the greatest job in the world because we get to work with great kids every day. So our grant is very unique because our fiscal agent is at the school. So we are housed right in the school. So we're very hands-on with our grant work. Some of the things that our coalition does is, our main purpose of our grant is to reduce youth and young adult alcohol and tobacco use sixth or 12th grade. We have expanded and have gone into the fourth and fifth grades at our school now. Like I mentioned, we have a Drug Free Communities Grant right now and we are working with other partners to start creating prevention county-wide.
So Cape has two parts. We have an adult coalition where community members and parents, guardians, come together once a month to talk about prevention efforts in our community. And we also have the youth coalition where students come together weekly on Wednesdays during lunches to talk about prevention efforts in our school and how they would like to make the school better. So I'm going to talk about some recent prevention efforts that we have done community-wide, but also school-wide. So we hosted a community block party. Students create prevention posters for our school. We do a cleanup around our high school and talk about what we find and how we can change that. I would like to shout out to our students here. They recently wrote the North End Foundation Grant and we have received that to do a cleanup at our high school in Cary Park. And we have purchased signs for their, just reminding our community members not to smoke in that area and that it is a community place. Beth and I have recently went to fourth and fifth graders' classrooms on choosing smart and healthy choices. We go on the radio. I'm sure you've all heard us monthly to talk about our prevention efforts. We recently changed our school tobacco policy. And now when a student does get caught with tobacco, we add in an education piece to it. We visit local establishments to provide updated posters that they can hang up. We go to establishments and post-prevention stickers on their coolers. So when you are grabbing alcohol, you see our Cape posters. We give prevention posters to them. We offer RBST, which is Responsible Beverage Server Training. And we do many school youth activities such as our youth is planning a dance for students to come on out instead of use drugs. And activity is fair, so you know all of the activities at our high school that students can be involved in. Cape Adult Coalition meets once a month, like I mentioned, the second Tuesday of the month at 11:00 a.m. and we do meet on Google Meet. So if it works out for your schedule, we would love to have more community members involved to spread the prevention efforts. We do have information out on the table as you leave. Cape Youth Coalition meets every other Wednesday. We do this during lunch so students don't have to miss out on other activities our school has to offer. Youth Coalition, our members, they do have core principles. So our students that are involved in our coalition, they are positive. They are leaders. They, of course, don't use alcohol or chemicals. They are honest, good examples and friendly. A student recently asked me the other day while they were filling out a scholarship application about what their role is in Cape. Our students are very good mentors for younger students. We have a lot of seniors this year that help our sixth and seventh graders, welcome them into the room and just make it a very safe and welcoming place. Our youth coalition this year has grown tremendously and there's roughly 45, probably growing every day, seventh through 12th graders involved in Cape.
So the final piece of our meeting tonight is our call to action. Our piece as prevention is talk to your kids, talk to them early, talk to them often and be involved. We do have a resource in the pamphlet and there's some resources out there. Educate yourself, others and youth, be involved in prevention efforts. Prevention efforts do not have to look like just saying no. Prevention efforts are outdoor activities. Prevention efforts are having a conversation. Prevention efforts are sitting down and having a meal, whether it's breakfast, lunch or dinner. We are currently, we had some funding that we are hiring a youth activities coordinator who will plan, coordinate and supervise sober activities for community and our youth. So we are currently looking for someone to do that. We, by supporting our Cape grant also, and we are grant-funded. So when you come out to activity or to things like this, this supports our grant so that we can get future funding. The last thing is if you see something, the number up here, 218-286-4416 is the non-emergency number for law enforcement. is the non-emergency number for law enforcement. Oh, 283, oh, it says 286, it's 283, excuse me. Our kids are everybody's investment. We want them to grow up in our community happy, healthy and safe. And we'd like them to come back to our community. And so, we all need to work together on this problem. I think that's it for Cape.
Thank you Beth and Janessa. Thank you for all, everything you do at our schools through Cape. And, you know, again, wanna thank everyone for being here. Time for questions and answers. If you've written down a question, I'd ask that you raise your hand. We can get our students to come and pick those up. Anyone who has, you know, just a question they want to, you know, yell out here, they're certainly welcome to do that. And I'll, I'm gonna, I seen...
I just want law enforcement to reiterate how in Canada they found marijuana laced with methamphetamine.
Right, question is, is law enforcement aware?
Right, this is a few years ago, just a, so people realize marijuana is, they have found that there's methamphetamine.
So is that something that we've seen and we're aware of that, that marijuana can be laced with methamphetamine? And they've got the microphone right there for each gentleman.
Bushman.
Yep.
Yes, we are, we are aware of that, that in our community.
So that everybody knows, because at one point...
Yeah, and again, the thing is that kids understand is they, they really do not know what they're getting because the people that are doing it don't really know what they're doing.
Alright, we've got lots of questions coming in here.
Just wanna add something to what John said. We talk about it in group. And this goes for adults, adolescents and everything in this day and age, this fentanyl thing. I think it'd be a fool, or an addict, right, but a fool to buy methamphetamine or cannabis off the street. An absolute fool. To kill you, kill you instantly and you, you will never know when it's coming. That's the world we live in right now.
Alright, here's a, I've got a couple of questions on Narcan and naloxone. First, does our law enforcement have that readily available to them? Is that good? Can you hear me?
Yep. Ah, yeah. The sheriff's office, I believe, still carries it. So does the police department, as well as the fire hall, I believe. There's grants out there for that, that currently we are looking into to obtain more of that. It does expire. It's also becoming a common practice to have it at the office, in the evidence room and pretty much anywhere that you'll come across any kind of drugs because fentanyl can be pretty much laced in anything.
And then along that same line, there's a question about where, is that something that's readily available to community members? That they could get, you know, get some Narcan to have available? Is that, that's something that's available?
It is. Actually, I brought some along with me tonight to give out. I just have a few samples. But we're trying to get them in the schools with legislative work. We're also, again, law enforcement has it now, but if you go to a pharmacist, I don't think you need a script any longer for this or ask your doctor, but we're trying to make it so that you just can go into any pharmacy and you can pick up naloxone. Just to have it if you wanna keep it handy. But we're trying to get a lot of this out with the opioid council that I'm a part of. We're getting a lot of that lawsuit money that's coming in from the, from the pharmaceutical companies I mentioned earlier. You'll see at different times, a lot of naloxone dumps going on. But we're gonna try to get it out to the community so that law enforcement has it, communities can use it. Little Knox boxes are there, what they're gonna be called alongside of those AED machines, you know, that they can, help jump your start, your heart. You'll see more of those coming around. This is gonna be one of those things we want people to take if they need it. But naloxone is saving a lot, a lot of lives. And we don't wanna get, let money get in the way of those to our cities, our schools. Businesses should have these. I want college kids to have them around the dorms. Wherever there could be some people that might be trying or using, have this stuff laying around. It's important. It's like having those kind of medicines.
Question, question is how soon does it have to be administered?
You can administer the, the drug either nasal or with the muscular thing, and I've got both here. But as long as the heart is still beating, they might have stopped breathing. But if you can get it in them, as long as they're still breathing, you've got a couple of minutes to get it in there. That's what it is. And if you don't, don't stop, do it anyway. You know, just, and then start with heart compressions or something. So there's no reason to not try it, but obviously it adds up in minutes, in seconds and minutes really matter. Right. If you're not sure that they're going down for any reason, they're just going unconscious. If you don't know, if you gave this to them, nothing will happen to them. You can give it to them and no matter what happens, you're not gonna hurt them. So it's a safe thing to use, even if it's not an overdose. It might be a seizure. It might be something different, but you're not gonna hurt anybody.
Alright, our next question is, is directed towards Cape. Questions I've heard Cape is available to seventh through 12th and also sixth through 12th. Could you please clarify that?
So we, our high school is a sixth through 12th grade high school. So we do, in order to come, how the schedule works is seventh through 12th grade come into the room. We still do activities with sixth grade, mostly we go into the sixth grade room. Before and after school, sixth grade do come into the room. But yes, we, it is a sixth through 12th grade grant. It is a sixth through 12th grade coalition. It's just with sixth grade schedule, it's not as easy for them to come into our room.
Alright, and this is a, this is a, this is a good question and certainly something I think we probably all anticipated. Who specifically can a parent call for help? Wanted to start with that one. Heather, you're grabbing the mic.
I can't answer for law enforcement or social services if they get involved. But there are crisis lines. They may not be able to handle, you know, drug situations, but they can get you to the right direction. I think Gus and I would both say Rainy River Recovery is, is always supportive for our community and if parents have concerns. Our phone number was on the slide.
Resource slide?
I believe it's incorrect on the paper pamphlet. But if you Google Rainy River Recovery, we would absolutely meet with parents, meet with kids.
Law enforcement?
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify for law enforcement. You know, if you're a parent that, you know, feels more comfortable contacting law enforcement. Again, when we get your call, our first goal is to help your family member. It's not to get another charge on them or anything like that. So feel free to call law enforcement as well.
And from our school aspect, I, any adult in our building would be able to listen and help direct you. We have social workers in both our elementary and our high school. We have counselor, we have a dean of students, we have Cape staff. So, but I would really say that if you're, if you are worried about your child and they go to a school, any adult in that school, their teacher, maybe their favorite teacher, is going to be able to at least point you in the right direction.
We do, we do have some of those resources that are available in our community up on the screen right now with their phone numbers. And they, and these are the correct ones, ones on the, on the program. I think one or two of them may be, may be wrong. So, follow-up to that line of question for law enforcement is, you know, if, if, you know, if a parent does call law enforcement, you know, obviously, you know, they worried, they're gonna be, you know, what's the next step? They're gonna be, is there gonna be some kind of charge? I mean, they need to be afraid of that. That's a, that's a valid, a valid question.
I mean, I'm gonna speak for the sheriff's office. I think I can speak for the city police department also that again, our first priority is gonna be to get that individual help. That's our first priority.
The other thing that passed a couple of years ago in legislation is the, it was called Steve's Law, also Good Samaritan Law. So if you are with somebody and they are using and somebody is getting in trouble, we're telling you, make sure you call law enforcement. And if you call, and then, and if you're just, again, if you're casually using, if you aren't sure what's happening, you will not get in trouble. You will not be charged if you are calling for help and saving someone's life. So it's called the Good Samaritan Law. It's important. It passed, I wanna say probably six, seven, eight years ago in Minnesota. And a lot of people don't know about that. But it's important. If you are in trouble, you will not get in trouble by calling for help. So please keep that in mind and share that. That's really important. Good question.
Alright. Our next question is, fentanyl's been around for a long time. The fentanyl you get from a doctor usually comes in the form of a patch and, and measures in the micrograms given for very extreme pain situations. The question this person has is where is this fentanyl that we're seeing coming from? And is this the same fentanyl that is heavily regulated?
Well, this, this fentanyl is coming from China. It's produced in China, it's sent to Mexico. And most of this stuff is pressed in pills in Mexico and it's flown in or it's crossing the southern border. That's what most people are telling us. Ninety percent of it is coming through the United States through that, through that channel. I'm also hearing a lot, a lot of it's coming on airplanes, landing in, in the, in the airports. Dogs are having a hard time sniffing out the pills, letting the wood, the, the powder and such. So they're getting better at it, but pills are just a new kind of a dosage delivery system that is a little bit more challenging for the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, the labs, the VCA labs are really backed up. And so part of these, the problem with the pills is we need to find new legislation to give prosecutors a better chance to get rid of the bad guys that, that are doing this without going through a thousand pills if they seize them all. We're trying to make sure we can do a sampling of it. Right now they gotta do all of it. And to have the charges not be what they should be. So we've gotta change the law in Minnesota. We're working on that right now. But that is, that's where fentanyl is coming, the long answer. And it's coming in just droves. Horrible.
Is, is, there's a question, is, is, is this the same as carfentanil? And what is that?
I'm not making that up on this, but Gus wants the mic.
Carfentanil is, is a form of fentanyl. It's about 50 times stronger than regular fentanyl. It's, it's, carfentanil is, was developed by pharmaceuticals, veterinarians to use it for their cows and horses, big animals, elephants in zoos, hippos. And people are getting a hold of carfentanil, as strong as it is, and they're distributing it among the, they're on the streets throughout our country. Carfentanil is, is really basically fentanyl in a, in a different form, is far stronger, far stronger.
Is that the one that's typically used in veterinary medicine for large animals?
That's good. So you can imagine, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna handle what a hippo can take. You know, it wouldn't take much. The other thing, you know, real quick about, we're talking about the ingredients coming in from China. They're being manufactured, put together in clandestine labs and probably open street labs in Mexico. There aren't a lot of manufacturers, at least that, that have been busted in the United States itself because the, the labs are rather big and they're rather complicated and it's pretty hard to hide them. It's not like, like making meth out of your hunting shed, okay? But they use all kinds of, they use flour as, as, as a press in a, in a pill presses to make pills. They add fentanyl and they use flour as a press to make a pill. And then they send rainbow fentanyl and all this crap into the country. So if you can imagine those kind of manufacturers, people that, really, they don't care if you live or die or if I live or die and they're sending this stuff in tons into the United States. Once those pills are crushed and added to methamphetamine or crushed and snorted by an addict or kid that's experimenting or they're added to cannabis, you don't know what you're getting. There's pills, there's plenty of pills that have been, that are, that are tested that have no fentanyl in them. And the next pill will have enough fentanyl to kill 10 people. There's no controls at all. And really, most people can't tell if there's pills laying all over the table. You couldn't pick out the Pfizer pills from the Mexican pill. You can't, you really can't. So, other than...
I have a question here. To what extent is Cape represented throughout the county and at other schools other than here in International Falls?
So Cape was a coalition before we got our grant. But our fiscal agent is ISB 361. So right now, we only work with the kids that are in our school district. But like I had mentioned, we are working on partnerships throughout the county to expand and get more outreach into other schools.
Alright, the next question we have is if law enforcement is called to get help with a child that is dealing or having an issue with what we're talking about here, will that parent face repercussions from Child Protection Services?
No, it's essentially the same thing as a Good Samaritan Law. And again, our focus is gonna be on the, the person.
And you know, that's just a, it's a really good question because the stigma of addiction and the stigma of having that around, we're getting a lot more advanced when our, when it comes to our law enforcement officers, our prosecution people. They do not wanna put people away that are genuinely having substance use disorder problems. So we are getting better at not wanting to put people away for those things. If you are intending to sell and you have a large amount of possession with you, that's a different thing. But we are, we are learning a lot in public service. And what we're all doing up here is to make sure that, we wanna help you if you are having a drug issue. We do not wanna put you in jail. And we are all getting better with that. And the communities, I think, are getting better. But people I get, they're still scared because they don't know. But this, this, the world of stigma in this disease is hard to kinda break. You just don't do that overnight. So by, by having events like this helps people understand you're not alone and we have help if you want help. If you wanna sell and distribute, then we wanna catch you. But we, if you want help, that's what we're doing here tonight.
Alright, we have a question here. What is done at school for students who can't talk to their parents because they use?
Could you repeat that?
So the question is what, what if anything is done or available at school for students who may want to, you know, talk with someone and would like to talk to their parents?
I, I've worked at the school district for quite a few years, and from my experience, we just keep talking with that child. We try to get them to maybe a resource within the school. And we really try to figure out why they can't go to their parent. Is it something of a bigger issue? Or is it, they're just simply not comfortable? But we, we really try to, we do have resources within our, within our school that we try to utilize so that we can start the open communication with the parent.
I think the question referenced a parent that was addicted. I've had a couple of kids that have come up to me and mentioned different information they've known about either other kids using drugs, or even people outside the community using drugs. But I'll, I'll take that information, try to get as much as I can, and pass it along to our drug task force here at the PD.
Are there other resources for, I mean, even a, somebody in high school? We talk about, you know, parents to reach out to, you know, what resources they would call, but I mean, what, you know, is there somewhere that a, that adolescent can go to, even outside of school, to talk with someone?
I think Rainy River Recovery could just definitely, if kids were having concern, we're not in this school, but we, we have a pretty good location, Kitty Corner from True Star. I also kind of wanted to bring our mental health component into this. I also work with a company, Cedar Branch Counseling. It's, it's small, but it's great. And I meant to say this when I was standing up, but your brain shuts off when you have anxiety. And we have two, three really wonderful counselors at Cedar Branch. And when I had mentioned that opiates treat emotional pain, I forgot to mention, a lot of times, maybe our kids are using in like a sort of self-medication effort. So definitely, if you're worried about your kids, or if you're having a hard time parenting in this society we're in today, definitely reach out. We can handle it.
Along those lines, and it kind of mirrors something that I was touching on, about talking to your kids. If, if you discover drugs, or you hear rumors that your child might be drinking alcohol, whatever they might be doing, be very, very careful about going off on them. You might be dealing from a position of fear. I mean, you're scared, and you start hollering and screaming and throwing things around. But be very careful with that, because you really don't know, even as a parent, what function that drug, whatever it is, what that function, that, what function that intoxication is providing. If, if this is that child's primary coping mechanism, and they fear coming to you, it's going to be a long time before you shut that one down. So be very careful before you go off. I mean, kids, even kids need, we need consequences. Consequences are the only thing that sober's anybody up. I don't care who you are, consequences, right? But what is the attraction that intoxication brings? Be careful. Don't drive that child away from you.
All right. We've got just a couple more questions here. One, one is, you know, a question I think in our current landscape, we probably anticipated getting in some form or another, excluding medical marijuana, wouldn't legalizing marijuana in Minnesota make the drug problem worse? Isn't that what science and statistics would tell us? I don't want to get into a big political, you know, debate here, but I mean, I think it's a valid question. I think it's a valid question.
And I think that, that is a very hot topic right now in St. Paul. It's, it will pass this year, by the way. It's coming, and we're trying to make sure that if it's going to pass, because the people in charge want it to pass, we have to make sure it's done in the right way. There's a lot of states that have given us a lot of signals that this is what's not working here. And so we're hoping to pass that information on to those people that, that really want to push this through. Law enforcement, I've been told, do not want this. There's no way to test this alongside the road. Employers don't want it because if people come in and they've been using, it doesn't get out of your system. There's a whole bunch of complicated things about recreational marijuana. We're going to have to deal with this. We have to figure it out. I don't have an answer. I don't want to make it political. It's not something that I would ever support because of my history with what I have seen sitting around support groups in, in, in treatment rooms to say how I got started was with marijuana, or with liquor. And the argument is, well, it's no different than liquor. Well, let's have the argument, let's just let more come out. You know, more substance use orders, challenges come out because we have a new form now called green, you know, green marijuana. But I've seen it too many times that it has gotten people started at early age, and I think having more available is not a good idea in Minnesota. That's my position on this. And again, I know people on both sides of the aisle will support it and not support it. But I think it's, it's coming. We have to be ready for it in Minnesota. So it's just, it's unfortunately, I think, going to be a reality, and we have, we have to deal with that. Medical cannabis, I actually support. I think it's doing some good things, and it's very controlled. But this is going to be, it's going to make the whole landscape different.
Anyone else on that?
Just using some, some common sense streets, which really is my forte, I guess. Those of you that can take yourself back to marijuana, back in your day, back in my day, THC contents were... I want to, I want to throw that again.
Thanks, Heather.
No, the THC, the THC contents were not what they are today, right? They were down five, six, seven, eight percent THC in the weed that we were buying and smoking and coughing and choking on. Anybody ever tangled with hash oil back in the day? Back in the day, hash oil. It'll send you to places that you didn't even think existed. Scared a lot of people. Scared me at one time. Don't remember any of it. That's what they're smoking today. That's what they're legalizing today. That's what your adolescents, your adolescent brains are going to be ingested, ingesting on a daily basis. Dabs, they talk about these dabs, 95% THC, these wax things, 95% THC. The weed on the streets is 30, 40, almost 50% THC. Don't turn your back on it. And if they don't legalize it, then it's out of my hands.
All right. I've got one, one last one, and it's really just kind of more informational. The, the at-home marijuana test is available locally at a Dollar Tree, the Dollar Tree store here in International Falls, so people can get that marijuana test right there. So that's the questions I have that were brought up. We've got one raised way back, way in the back.
Well, you know, we've been here for a while and a lot, don't move. Absolutely interested in college. My name is Pam Hughes. I was born and raised in International Falls, graduated from here. Some years later, I moved away, and I worked for Voice, Word, Type, Government. I now work for University of Minnesota College of Pharmacy and Johns Hopkins. But I, there's just a couple of things that I would like to say. So I know there's been some other community meetings in International Falls.
Pam, why don't you, why don't you come down here and get on the mic here? So everyone can hear you.
And Pam used to work for us at Paul Beck Super Value way back in the day. Yeah, I just want to put that out there, too.
So I know there's been some other community meetings in the Falls. They're trying to do like some welcoming stuff with your Rotary Club, and I spoke with a couple of the individuals that were putting that on. So I noticed the one thing this evening, because I am Native American, and I use my voice a lot for our people. And so when I was meeting with the individuals putting on these welcoming committees for International Falls, they did, they mentioned to me that now in Cochise County, the American Indian population is number two in your county. And so I, I, I have wrote down just some different questions. I know there was questions on the Narcan, on the Loxone, the fentanyl test strips. So right now, in the current position I have, we purchase about $10,000 a month of the Narcan, of the nasal. And so I do bring that up when I come up to the Falls and stuff, but I think it's really important in your community to have a couple point of contacts, because your addicts are not going to go into law enforcement to get test strips. They're not going to go in there and ask for the Narcan. They're not going to go to your pharmacies. Back home, people know that, even our law enforcement knows, that they can come to my place, and I have it. And I have a previous coworker on the Net Lake side of our reservation that individuals go to. So it's really important to have that point of contact within your community so that your addicts feel comfortable where they're going. You know, they talked about stigma tonight? That's huge. That's huge for an addict. The best way I try to explain, an addict, because addiction is actually a medical diagnosis. It's no different than somebody having high blood pressure. That's a medical diagnosis. My husband, who passed from cancer, he had to have treatment for his cancer. It's no different with an addict. An addict needs treatment, but we also have to, you know, this is your community, this was my community, I still, my heart's still here in the community. And with my current position, I'm looking at writing some grants for Cochise County for your homeless population, and for the substance use programs and stuff, the school. But I think it's just so important, you know, that no matter what, they struggle, they're an addict, they're somebody's kid, they're somebody's sibling, you know, they're a parent, they have parents, you know? And they're no different than any of us. They're human beings, and I think that's just so important that people really start recognizing that, that that is a medical diagnosis. I wrote down, because I noticed they didn't talk about harm reduction. One of the things that I was able to do through a HERSA grant for our reservation, and I was telling Dave this earlier, but we are putting public vending machines in at Fortune Bay, and then also in the laundromat on the Net Lake side. And in those public vending machines, there, there's no cost. They'll get a PIN number to use it. There's multiple other ways they can access it, but we chose the easiest way to do it. But in those public vending machines, there will be the Narcan, there's the fentanyl test strips, there's going to be pregnancy tests, COVID tests, socks, personal hygiene, clean syringes, because clean syringes are really important for our addicts to be using. So it's just a wide variety of things. That is something that I am looking at to do to bring to International Falls. I met with, and I apologize, but I, I don't recall her name, but I did meet with somebody today at SOS. And being that they are going to have a, a part of their building that is going to be open 24 hours a day, it would be a good place to put that vending machine so others could have access to it. You all need to start going to your county board and your school boards, you know, because it's you all. You guys need to take back your community. You need to be giving your input. You know, when Beth Ann was talking, and when it was mentioned about the sixth graders, you know, that's something you need to go to your school board about. Adjust those hours for those sixth graders, so those sixth graders can go in those rooms. For me, the opiate epidemic is not an epidemic. To me, it's a pandemic. It's no different than COVID was. We have people dying daily from that. And I just, people need to start, you know, looking at it that way. You need to talk to your legislators. I sit on a council for the state of Minnesota, a couple of them, a substance use one and homelessness. What I always say for my people is, when you're making decisions about my people, then you need to have our people at the table. And because I am American Indian, my other comment to them is, I will bring a fold-up chair, I will bring my powwow chair, but I'm going to be at your table, because my people need a voice. It's the same with you all here, parents, grandparents, whatever. Your voice matters. You need to go out there and speak to those school board members. My understanding was there was a resource officer at your school. You no longer have that at the school. You know, ask why? Because when the, it comes down to the dollar. But are your children's lives, your grandchildren's lives, aren't they more important than a dollar? You know, so it's, it's those types of things. Reach out to your county boards. Make that relationship with them, you know, because the more of you that can do it, it's your community, and they're seeing that. Your law enforcement. Work with your law enforcement. You know, just take the time to go into their offices and say hi to them and whatever, but you need to build those relationships. The other thing that is huge for me is things being presented in a culturally appropriate way. Because for me, it's my culture that's our prevention, and it's our traditions that are our treatment. And, you know, we all have to live together, but I see that where my people are left out a lot. And that's why I do use my voice for our people. I am not a person to stand in front of people, I am not a public speaker, but I do it because I care. I have worked in substance use, I have worked in homelessness, and they are all human beings. They just need that helping hand, you know? So you look up here, who's sitting up here, those are people that can be reached out to. You know, sometimes just a position is intimidating, but they're there. They're, they're sitting here tonight saying they're there. You know, they brought up when people want to call and report something, because that is, it goes along with the stigma and the fear. When you have somebody ODing, and there's children in that home, they don't want to call, because the next thing, those kids are going to be removed from the home. And so often, that happens to my people. It's, you know, I, I still know a lot of people in this International Falls community because I come here often, but yet I still see that where my people are treated differently. You know, I can tell you, social services, it has been going on for years, where my people's kids are treated differently. Even when I worked here, that they were treated differently. They shouldn't be, because we're all equal, you know?
And to Pam's point, I just want to, I want, we got to wrap it up a little bit here, Pam, sorry. But she's saying a lot of right things. On the opioid council that I serve on, we've learned a lot about healing treatments for their traditions, and that's really important. And so we've learned a lot about that. We don't always go on evidence-based stuff when it comes to our Native Americans. So thank you for your comments. This is important. We got to wrap it up, and we're getting it long, but thank you very much, Pam, for that.
Thank you.
She did bring up a good point, something that, that I did want to bring up, and wasn't talked about, was that concept of harm reduction. And that, you know, and that's a good way to end this and wrap it and tie it all in. You know, that's, that's why we're here tonight. It is truly that, harm reduction, and in whatever way, shape, or form that may take. And, you know, one of the other things that were mentioned by a couple of our panelists, especially with our juveniles, parents, grandparents, this conversation needs to start earlier, and it needs to be happening more often. And I think that's a very important thing. If you sweep it under the rug, pretend it's not going to happen to you, I think you have seen firsthand here tonight that it can. And so I'm going to leave you with that. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight on this very important topic. To all our panelists, I want to thank you for all your work in putting this together, especially again to Cape and the Dan Baker Foundation for sponsoring this. So thank you, everyone.
And again, I just want to say, this is an out-of-towner here. I came in with some new outside eyes. What you have here are folks that do this with you every single day. What you saw the judge do is actually do something judges don't normally do. He had a call to act- He had a call to action. He sees what's going on, and he got us all going on this thing. So that's a huge thing for you, Jared, thank you very much for that. And again, my experience here has been amazing, and I got some great ideas that's happening in the school. I want to see more people doing what they're doing there. It's really something special. So can't tell you how much this has been great for us tonight. Thank you all to the panels that are saving lives every day, you don't even know it. But again, thank you, Jared, and everybody for being here. I just wanted to say, you guys are doing amazing stuff from the outside.
All right, and again, fill out the surveys if you have them, and drop them off to our students as you leave. There's also the tables that are in back that have a bunch of information and different things for you to take a look at. And have a good evening, everyone.